All right, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. December 18th, 7:00 PM. How do please follow?
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Mangus. Mr. Marmee.
Present.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bugg.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
And Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
We have eight present this evening. If you please stand for the invocation by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the puchlage.
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to live in a country where we're free to speak our minds and where we have decent living conditions. During this holiday season, I ask that you be with all of us here, but also be with all of those who are ill, who are hurting, who are in financial serious problems. Be with our military, where everything may be. Be with the people in California who have been battling forest fires for weeks now. Be with us tonight as we make decisions facing our city. We have lots of issues, but we need to move forward as a community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. We do have one thing. We have Rule 11 on Resolution 17-103, appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation. If it's okay with Mr. Marmee and Mrs. Floyd, we will be fixing that up in Miss Lang's. Anything else for caucus to see? Mrs. Floyd?
Excuse the absences of Mr. Bugg and Mr. Mangus, please.
Question by Mrs. Floyd, second by Mr. Marmee. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have our minutes of the December 4th, 2017 meeting. Is there a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, under reports of standing committees, we have one from Finance and one from Service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have a report from city officials, Stephen Johnson, our auditor, the operating report for the period ending November 30th, 2017. Without objection, that will also be received and filed. Can you hear me in the back?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect. Next, on Communications, we have our State of the City by Mayor Hall. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Newark City Council Chambers for the 2017 State of the City address. This past year has been a busy and productive year for the city of Newark. We expect this to continue for the next several years with projects and improvements in process and those yet to come. I'd like to thank Newark City Council, along with the auditor, the treasurer, the law director, the municipal court judges, the clerk of courts, and directors for all their hard work over the previous year. With their support, the support of talented department heads and dedicated, hard-working employees, we are moving Newark forward. Many things could not be accomplished without the wonderful support of our citizens and community-minded individuals, businesses, and organizations that are providing help through various public-private partnerships. Thank you to all. We continue to achieve gains by operating in a teamwork environment with focus on financial planning, due diligence, and strong communication through research and open dialogue. We continue to focus in five key areas to make Newark an even better city to live, work, and raise our children. These five areas are safety, neighborhood improvement, economic development, school education support, and efficient and effective government operations. Safety. The Newark Division of Fire and Emergency Medical Services continues to provide outstanding customer care and life-saving services to our community, handling more than 10,000 fire and EMS runs each year. We are in the process of implementing a systematic vehicle replacement program in both the police department and the fire department. Planning and organization of leasing schedules and funding from EMS legislation has provided a new fire rescue unit, a much-needed modern medic fleet, and just last week, the addition of new police patrol units. With call volume increasing each year, the Newark Division of Police handles more than 30,000 calls to service in each 12-month period, providing safety in our community. The Newark Police Patrol Bureau and Detective Bureau worked diligently in 2016 and 2017, solving critical cases in the community through strong teamwork and active collaboration with our surrounding neighbors and law enforcement. They are to be commended for their efforts and for their results. Through cooperation with our Civil Service Commission, we have established a lateral hiring policy in the police and fire departments. This policy has allowed for easier and more efficient hiring to replace vacant positions in those departments. In many cases, the experienced applicant has proven qualities that we desire, and if hired, onboarding time can be reduced. We continue to empower employees, asking them to be creative, which results in department savings. As an example, a $1,500 vehicle lift was purchased and installed at the Newark Police Department. This lift allows NPD personnel to do maintenance work, such as fluid changes and brake pad replacements on patrol units in-house, saving thousands of dollars each year. Neighborhood improvement. Our Department of Development continues a strong relationship with Habitat for Humanity and the private sector, working to build homes and improve our neighborhoods and offer affordable housing to new owners that would not otherwise qualify. The program requires sweat equity from its new owners during the construction phase and a high level of funding and volunteerism from the local sector. This joint venture leads to the dedication of new Habitat Homes in Newark each year. Thank you to all that have been involved in these projects, including community-minded volunteers from Park National Bank, Owens Corning, and the Lincoln County Foundation. The Property Maintenance Division continues to pursue its mission of protecting property values and enhancing neighborhoods through effective inspection and enforcement activities. Over the year, some 30 blighted properties have been demolished with overgrown lots mode and trash removed as part of our ongoing neighborhood cleanup effort. We value our relationship and collaboration with the Lincoln County Land Reutilization Corporation, also known as the Lincoln County Land Bank. Significant gains have been realized in commercial and residential areas throughout Newark and Lincoln County. Blighted properties have been removed with the goal of placing those properties back on the tax roll. Our city park system continues to improve to provide areas for healthy outdoor sports and activities for children and adults alike. We continue to apply for and receive grant funding for enhancements. Plans are in process in cooperation with funding and assistance from the TJ Evans Foundation to add a skate facility at Everett Park. This will provide a safe environment for skateboarders and bicyclists. Cedar Hill Cemetery is getting a new fence and wall along Cedar Street, and the 2019 Babe Ruth World Series has come to Don Edwards Park. The Canal Market District Pavilion has completed its second summer season, once again providing good entertainment for the community and fresh, healthy food through its farmer's market. Economic development. Economic development continues in Newark with the guidance of the Newark City Department of Development, along with our local community improvement corporation, Newark Development Partners. New businesses have located in our downtown district, along with second and third forloft apartments as a result of the downtown utility improvement and renovation project. This project is transitioning our downtown into an improved destination and commercial district with the recognition by many groups across the state. This is all being done with the creative use of utility line improvement funds. Thank you to the staffs of the Water Department, the Engineering Department, and the Street and Traffic Department for their hard work and due diligence through the many phases of the project, including the new bridge on State Route 13 over State Route 16, which is our gateway into downtown. With strong support from Newark Development Partners and local private donors, Whitefield has transitioned into a beautiful upgraded sports facility with synthetic turf for not only football, but also soccer, lacrosse, and band competition. This past month brought great news to our community as Wexford Lodging Advisors purchased the Cherry Valley Lodge and plans to invest $13 million to upgrade the facility. The addition of an indoor event center was made possible with a creative agreement between Wexford, the city of Newark, and Explore Lincoln County. Please keep in mind that projects such as the downtown renovation and the upgrade of Whitefield make our community shine. It's this shine that attracts businesses, capital investment, and jobs. A stronger community provides jobs and additional funding to the many nonprofits in our area to help citizens that need assistance. School education support. We continue to have a strong relationship with our local and private schools to the benefit of our students for the future of our community. We are fortunate to have several outstanding academic institutions in our area. A Safe Routes to School grant that we received was used to build a new walk bridge near Liberty Middle and Legend Elementary Schools and for improved sidewalks and pedestrian crossings near Wilson Middle School and Newark Catholic High School. State capital improvement dollars we applied for and receive were used to build a new safer intersection at Sharon Valley Road and Evans Boulevard. Additional Safe Routes to School funding will be used in 2019 to improve Arlington Avenue near Heritage Middle School. Efficient and effective government operations. We started 2017 with a balanced budget and once again have a balanced budget for upcoming 2018 for operations within the city. While the general fund continues to be challenged, a strong teamwork attitude for all the departments, along with continued fiscal training, provided the proper balance of projected expenses to projected revenues. We were able to propose a 2018 balanced budget without personnel layoffs, without reducing capital improvement dollars, and without using budget stabilization funds. It appears our revenue sources are becoming more stable while we are realizing efficiencies set in motion over the past few years. This, along with strong fiscal awareness and planning, we owe this to our citizens. We continue to gain efficiencies in customer service using new and improved technology and software. Our employees need the proper tools to operate in an efficient and effective manner. Newark City Government continues to apply for pertinent grants that are in line with our overall goals. Each year, we're awarded numerous grants with funds to assist our safety forces, judicial system, city infrastructure, and city neighborhoods. As you can see, it's been a busy year. In conclusion, thank you for your wonderful support of the city. Newark is poised to have another great year in 2018 through additional growth and improvement. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we still have Communications. We have one more from Roger Loomis, our Utility Superintendent. Leaves to be applied to properties for past due water, sewer, and stormwater bills. Without objection, that will be received and filed. Next, we have comments from citizens. There are two times of comments from citizens this evening. One is now and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council or question-and-answer period. This is just your time to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand so I can bring you up in some kind of an order. And again, there's one other time after the legislation. Ma'am?
Yes, I just wanted to...
Ma'am, come up here, please, if you would. I didn't give you very good instructions, did I? Please come up here and if you'll give us your name and address for the record, and then that way everybody can hear you.
Yes, I'm Tanya Cooper. I'm with the North Thing Tank on Poverty. I also grew up in this city for many, many years. I currently live at 64 Popular Avenue. We're talking about new development and all that. Well, I beg to differ. My other... My reason for being here tonight is, we're talking that we took the gazebo away. Why? What was it doing wrong? A lot of people went there and enjoyed it in the summertime, the wintertime. We got a walk bridge that supports children that come out of the church, school, and has to go open at High Street and up in that area. So if you take that walk bridge out, they don't have buses. We're going to put it right on the highway. I don't think it should be done. Light it up, don't tear it down. It's time this city comes together and saves children. They're showing a walk on home tonight. That longer distance could be grabbed. They could fall. They could fall in the street. The bridge is the least safe to get them to where they need to be. We got problems here. We got drugs. We got all that. Pick up the pace. Let's do something about it. Quit saying we're doing something because we're not. Let's get some help for the meth addicts and the heroin addicts. I'm seeing people every day that are getting turned away because they have meth and no heroin. We can't help you. Take some research for a while. Read on it. You'll find out meth is worse than heroin will ever be. And until we stop it, and we stop all these other drugs, it's over with. We all have to come together and say, "We want different changes. We want everybody to be equal. Everybody be treated fairly." And it's not happening. I just came from a meeting tonight that made... Really upset me. We're talking about homeless people. Well, you know what? They're willing to open a shelter, but people that have a sexual background, sexual predator, can't come in. It's happening at the main place. What do we tell these people? They do 50 years, 10 years. They did their time. Come on. If they're not alone, let's give them a chance. Ain't that what we're about in America? Giving second chances? Let's do that. Let's quit batting your heads and say, "Oh, I don't want to talk about it." That's what's happening in this town. I live on Packer Avenue. I've called the police department several times. All my neighbors were beating each other in the middle of the street with a baby standing there. You know what they do? "Hi, how you doing? You need to stop." They're meth addicts. They're... I watch it every day. We get woke up at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and we've called them and called them. They come down, they go talk to them, and they walk away. "We're going to arrest you if we come back." I've had them come back 10 times in a row. 10, 12 at a time. "You need to settle down and walk away." There was a shooting this year, two doors away from me, a stone's throw that could have came through my house and hit my grandbabies, or hit my husband, or my children. And all we do is live there. We can't even go outside. We're afraid because of the neighbors fighting. I don't want my grandkids seeing that. What are we about? There's no reason for it. If you want to do something, quit giving them a break. Don't say, "I'm going to take you to jail," and then come back, clap your hands, "Well, calm down." That's upsetting me. You see that? You'll see that on... If they don't do some preaching up on Packer Avenue, it's going to get ugly. Because the neighbors... I have an old lady lives behind me. I have a late man that's in a wheelchair. They can't go anywhere. They're afraid to come out of their houses because we got these people running up and down the street, drug trafficking going on all night long. We're trying to make it better, and they're not... Please don't do nothing. I even talked to the one guy that's involved with the drug issue. You know what he told me? "I don't have time to talk to you right now. Send me an email." And he was there talking about drugs. Wouldn't even give me the time of day. You know why? Because I live in a poor neighborhood, and I'm tired. I'm tired of being walking around this town with a chariot on my back because my husband and I have dug the ground. We have worked our butts off and provided for our children and our grandchildren, and we get nothing but nonsense and turned away at every whipstitch. But we still keep going. We go on, go on, go on. But we happen to live in a neighborhood that we're scared to stick our head out the door at night. And I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm a 59-year-old woman. My husband just turned 60, and we've never done a darn thing to anybody. We're always helping people. What do you do now? All we can do is shrug our shoulders and say, "Time to move on." But you know what? We're on disability. Before we could get a $600 apartment, ain't going to work for us. We can't afford that. We get $1,300 a month to live with and $126 in food steeps. That's it. So you tell me how we're going to be at a apartment that is decent on that kind of money, rent, utilities, and all that on $39 a month. If you can show me how to do that, I'll do it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else besides Daniel? Three. Okay.
Yes, my name is Alicia Farias, 116 Smithview Drive. As Tanya just stated, we came from... There's going to be a warming shelter opening here in Newark, and the number of people that were there tonight who are going to be volunteers were talking about the number of homeless in our community, the number of homeless that we've received calls from today, and there is no place to put them, there's no place for them to stay. I am currently aware of a young father with his girlfriend and their son, and they're living in an abandoned house right now because the Salvation Army is full and there's no place for them to go. So this is the crisis that we're facing, and as Tanya spoke, there are so many people that are... That do not have enough to live on. And as I see the development of downtown, I see the closing of the McDonald's, I see the removal of the gazebo, the places that would be affordable or accessible to people that are living on the edge, who can't make it through no fault of their own. They're being pushed away, and we want that gazebo to be returned as a symbol to the people of this community, not the ones that have the money, not the ones that can go downtown and go out to eat and go to the Midland, the citizens of Newark who are not those citizens but who have... Who should have equal access to their community. So I am also representing the group that has been organizing around the gazebo, and we have over 1,300 signatures from our online petition, as well as collecting signatures at the courthouse lighting. So we're asking Jeremy Blake to put forth an amendment to be brought forth tonight and to have it seconded and discussed until someone takes responsibility for the removal of the gazebo, and the city and the mayor who authorized the removal should return it or rebuild a gazebo as a vital public space for the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court. I'm here to speak about the gazebo again, and I want to preface that by saying, often the council invites the public to speak in different ways. I think some of that, to me, seems to be lip service. It's an easy thing to say, but a lot of people feel intimidated and feel like they can't freely speak. People who do that, who are not used to speaking publicly, it's a challenge to do that, and they recognize that they don't know much of what's going on. But they do recognize that they know something about what's going on. So I wanted to sort of wish you all, everybody here, happy holidays, all kinds of happy holidays. My own family, we celebrate both Christmas and Hanukkah because I was raised in a Jewish family, and Hanukkah, if you don't know, is called the Festival of Lights, but it's also very well-known as a holiday of resistance. That is, the Jewish people historically have been scattered all over the world and are in small numbers in many, many locations, and have had to fight for their own existence in a lot of ways. A lot of biblical stories tell about this in the New Testament as well as the Old Testament. But it is a holiday of people sort of throwing off oppression and speaking up and being dissent, distant, dissenting from what is popularly accepted. And so what is popularly accepted on the council at this moment is that the removal of the gazebo was a necessary and, as the mayor says, a progressive thing to do, and somehow moving it to the east side where it will be restored somehow is the solution to some problem of making Newark, downtown Newark, a more delectable, enticing environment for business. Well, I question whose agenda this is, and I question whether this is the citizens' and communities' agenda or whether this is the agenda of real estate developers who want to see a certain kind of Newark. And a certain kind of Newark doesn't necessarily include Tanya Cooper and thousands and thousands of other people who are dealing with survival. And so I think there's a very important question here, and I think my own history is of trying to speak out against what I think is wrong. Maybe this is something you all know. You've probably all heard of a person named John Brown, who actually events, you know, around John Brown's life took place, some in Ohio, in different parts of Ohio, and John Brown was a white American who stood against slavery, and he was actually leading an attempt to get a military arsenal to turn over the arms to slaves so they could rebel. And they hung him in 1859 for his position. He's largely credited with being one of the factors that caused the beginning of the Civil War, which was on the surface of war to end slavery and had that important role. I say all this because I... One of the things he said as he went to the hangman's noose was, "The important thing is not to live long, but to live well." And what he meant by "well" was to live with a clear conscience and with a clear sense that you were addressing the real needs of a community and the real needs of the society. And he thought he was by helping to free the slaves, or trying to. But I'm here also, of course, to speak about the gazebo. I want to strongly support the fact that there's probably about 1,500 or somewhere around there, signatures on petitions. One of the council people told me that some of these... A few of these signatures were from other places. I don't think that's very consequential. I think that's the kind of thing you attack when you want to question the total legality of something and not the legitimacy of it in terms of what it really represents. And I think that at least 1,000, maybe more, people who live very close to here in Newark or right around Newark signed those petitions. And that's important. I understood previously that Jeremy and Mike Mangus, who's not here, were going to introduce a proposal to amend the budget to allow for funds to be set aside for the restoration of the gazebo. I would encourage that to take place, and I would also encourage the recognition that that was a mistake to remove the gazebo. Again, the last thing I want to end with is, I just want to be clear that whose agenda we're dealing with here is not the agenda of people who are making profit from the improvement of Newark and the area only, and their concern about the community is very small compared to their concern about their own real estate development or interests. Thank you.
Mr. Green. Ms. Connecticut. Okay. Mr. Crawford.
Daniel Crawford, 163 South Secretary. Jen and I kind of drew invisible straws, not pulled a short straw. First of all, I want to say, before I get to speaking, I want to say that I hope everyone here knows, you know, regardless of where we stand on the individual political issues, I actually do genuinely like everyone in this room. I do. I may not agree on most policies with some or all policies with others, but I do genuinely like all of you. Having said that, today is my son's 11th birthday. I was not originally planning to be here today for that reason, but when it came to my attention that my councilman, Jeremy Blake, was wanting to offer an amendment to tonight's budget and that he could not get a second for that, it enraged me, to be honest. You know, I'm a firm believer that if a member of council, you know, has an idea, at least give it a vote. I mean, there's been things that have been passed out of committee that probably would have had no business coming out of committee just because you wanted to give every member of council a chance to vote on it. I don't care if there's a majority of Republicans or a majority of Democrats on council right now. This isn't about Democrat or Republican. I personally could care less about either label. What I care about are the people in this room and the people beyond this building. I care about my children and their future and the government that supposedly represents them, not the damn Democratic or Republican parties. I could care less about either. My personal opinion, both parties need to be torn down and thrown into the ash heap of history. But, we're not here or there right now, but right now we are here in the city of Newark discussing a symbol that was torn down without the... Without the obvious support of the majority of the citizens of Newark. I don't remember seeing crowds of people outside City Hall saying, "Tear it down." I don't remember hearing reports of phone calls flooding your phones demanding that the gazebo come down. This was, after all, a symbol of our community. All the benches and everything that surrounded the square, were there demands that they come down to? I do not think so. We cannot even get answers as to where this money came from to tear it down. And honestly, like I said, I don't want to even be here tonight. I am tired of us coming here for answers and not getting those answers. I am tired of hearing people say, "Oh, we support you. We thank you for coming here." I don't care about your words, I care about your actions. At the end of the day, we need to remember who this body serves. It's not the Democratic, Republican parties, it's the people of the city of Newark. So I ask, regardless of whether or not we know for sure there will be a second, that we propose this amendment to give the... we propose this amendment to give the people of Newark a chance to have a vote on whether or not we can even have a gazebo. And if anything, we can alter the language, not put $50,000 on there, just put a minimum of whatever it would take to build a foundation contingent upon whether or not we, the people, can raise the money ourselves. Let us, the people of Newark, raise it ourselves. Because if we show that we are willing to do that, it means we want a gazebo on our square. Whose square is that? Is it our square or is it the square of the few on the...
Turn her down a notch.
Square. So, sorry. This is just an accumulation of emotions that have been building up inside of me because I'm tired of feeling like we are getting ignored and I'm tired of feeling like this is all about partisan politics. Like, I don't care. I don't care about the Democratic Party right now. I don't care about the Republican Party. I care about our system working for us. And honestly, I don't even plan on staying here all night long because I need to get back to my son's birthday. So I want to see what happens with this vote and I bid you, I plead with you, to do what we are begging you to do. Thank you.
Ms. Kennedy? Ms. Kennedy, are you speaking?
I always say Daniel's the honey to my hot sauce, but I think tonight he's got the hot sauce. Jen Kennedy, 2584 Upland View Court. So there are probably, there's over 1,000 people in the gazebo group on Facebook and they have been meeting weekly and I have been to every single meeting and there are anywhere from probably six to 12 people that show up pretty regularly. They don't like to public speak, so I've kind of taken it upon myself to kind of be a little bit of their voice. And I just wanted to come up here tonight and read a little bit of the email that I sent to the Democrats over the weekend. And I want to publicly thank Jeremy Blake for coming to the gazebo meetings and for hearing the people and hearing their concerns because ultimately this isn't just about the gazebo. This is about what's going on, the lack of transparency and a lot of other issues in Newark. So if I could, I'll just read a little bit of this. "I wrote this email to encourage council Democrats to get together and agree on an amendment to bring forward at council tomorrow. The group presented their signatures. This isn't just about the gazebo. It's about holding the mayor and elected officials accountable and frankly, city council accountable after giving themselves a raise. This is also about closing the fire station, closing the McDonald's, the lack of affordable housing, the lack of public transportation, the gentrification of Newark, the $1,500 loft apartments, which I don't even know where Tanya could get a $600 apartment at around here. It would be shocking. Pushing the homeless out of the city. I met with the county auditor the other day and my battery was dead because I left my kid in my car listening to the radio. And I went into the Wendy's to try to get someone to come and give me a jump and it was full of homeless people. And I'm like, oh my God. The first thing I thought of is they're going to try to close this Wendy's. They closed the McDonald's. Are they going to try to close the Wendy's? And I really, from conversations that I've had with other people, I've got money on the footbridge that's going to be closed by the end of the summer. And I hope that's not true, but from the talk I've heard, I think it will. The gazebo group is not asking for $50,000. They're asking for something reasonable to force a vote and hold elected officials accountable. I'd like to suggest $39,628.16 or even half of that be expended for the purposes of returning the gazebo to the Courthouse Square and refurbishing it. The larger sum, as roughly what the council raises, will cost the city over a fully funded four-year term. Surely council can get behind giving taxpayers the same amount of money one time that they voted to give themselves over a course of a full term." So I appreciate Jeremy bringing this forward to the gazebo group and they appreciate his hard work. And I would just ask someone, even Mr. Rath, who I hate to see run to the left of Democrats, but I just ask for someone to bring Jeremy's amendment forward so it can at least be discussed. Even if you vote no, we just would like to see it get some consideration and the rest of the issues talked about. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to ordinance, this is on the first reading, 17-61.
Ordinance 17-61 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, an ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2018.
17-61 is on the first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 17-61.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. This needs to be expedited in order to be effective for January the 1st when our fiscal year begins.
Mr. Marmy, ordinance, call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived eight to zero. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to pass ordinance 17-61.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-61?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
I want to just make some comments over the, this is our general fund operating budget for 2018 and I think as part of the budget, this doesn't include capital improvement dollars. And last week, I do want to thank the city official law director and the city auditor for meeting with me because for the last several months, we have talked about, we've had seen people about the gazebo. We have seen people about coming in and presenting and talking about what can be done about the gazebo and the decision to move it and how do we best move forward. I did float the idea of wanting to present an idea, an amendment, that would earmark $50,000 out of the capital improvements budget, which is a fund listed within this legislation. But being a legislator also, I know that, I know math and the math just isn't there to support it. So I'm not going to be offering the amendment to do that just because I know that the math isn't there to do that. But I do want to encourage the administration to look at capital improvement dollars as far as putting back the gazebo or even using the unappropriated balance. That's going to be about maybe $30,000, $40,000 at the end of this year to use those dollars to put back the gazebo. I know there's some members of council have concern about using certain dollars for putting this structure back, but again, I think it symbolizes so much more. I'm not, obviously, my name has been thrown out many times this evening and I do disagree with the decision that was made to remove the gazebo. And I'm just looking for, trying to find a way to put it back because I think it does symbolize so much more. It symbolizes civic agency. It symbolizes the diversity in our community. There's so many symbols associated with that structure that just having it in the heart of our city is something that's important. And so I'm not going to offer the amendment tonight because the numbers aren't there to support it, but I do hope that the administration looks at capital improvement dollars or some other funding to place some type of structure back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Is there any discussion on 17-61? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
17-61 passes eight to zero. Next, we move on to 17-62 on the first reading.
Ordinance 17-62 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, an ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2018.
17-62 is on the first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 17-62.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expedite this in order to make it effective January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Now, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
17-62 passes eight to zero. Next, we move on to 17-63.
Ordinance 17-63 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, an ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2018.
17-63 is also on the first reading. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on 17-63.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we need to expedite this in order to make it effective January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Now, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 17-63.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-63? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived.
Mr. President?
We'll wait till this conversation gets done. Thank you. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 17-99.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-99? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived.
Mr. President? Make a motion to adopt ordinance 17-63.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-63? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
17-93 passes eight to zero. Next, we move on to 17-94.
Resolution 17-94 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to enter into contract with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and Lincoln County Emergency Management Agency for the continued provision of emergency 911 communication services on behalf of all city of Newark safety services.
17-94 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 17-98.
Resolution 17-98 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to enter into contract with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and Lincoln County Emergency Management Agency for the continued provision of emergency 911 communication services on behalf of all city of Newark safety services.
17-94 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 17-98.
Resolution 17-98 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Marmy, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the city of Newark, Ohio for 2018.
17-98 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 17-99.
Resolution 17-99 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Rath, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
17-99.
Mr. Marmy, make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on resolution 17-99.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Marmy.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are the end-of-the-year kind of adjustments that we have to make to close out 2017's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. Now, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived.
Mr. President?
We'll wait till this conversation gets done. Thank you. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt resolution 17-99.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 17-99? Seeing none, please call the roll to vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
17-99 passes eight to zero. Next, we move on to 17-100 on the first reading.
Resolution 17-100 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and commit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a one-year use of funds action plan along with an application for fiscal year 2018 federal community development loft grant funds as required by 24 CFR Part 91.220 for various programs related to housing and community development.
17-100 will be held for two weeks. Next, we have 17-101.
Resolution 17-101 by Mr. Rath, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to enter into a contract for participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for the years 2017 through 2020.
17-101 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally tonight, we have 17-102.
Resolution 17-102 by Mr. Marmy, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing the director of public service to make application to and enter into agreements with the Miss Kingdom Watershed Conservancy District for financial assistance for the loft pond run maintenance access project, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the same and declaring an emergency.
17-102 is on the first reading for this emergency.
to prepare and commit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a one-year use of funds action plan along with an application for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen federal community development block grant funds as required by twenty-four CFR Part ninety-one point two-two-zero for various programs related to housing and community development.
Seventeen dash one hundred will be held for two weeks, next we have seventeen dash one-on-one.
Resolution seventeen dash one-on-one by Mr. Raff, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract for participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for the years two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty.
Seventeen dash one-on-one will be held for two weeks for a second reading, and finally tonight we have seventeen dash one-two.
Resolution seventeen dash one-on-two by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to make application to and enter into agreements with the Miss Kingdom Watershed Conservancy District for financial assistance for the Lothran Run Maintenance Access Project, authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to effectuating the same and declaring an emergency.
Seventeen dash one-on-two is on the first reading, but this is an emergency, what does your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt seventeen dash one-on-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on seventeen dash one-on-two?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
This carries the emergency clause because we have weeks of deadlines profiling.
Mr. Raff, anyone else? On, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub? Mr. Cost? And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash one-on-two passes eight zero. And that will conclude our legislation for the evening and for the year, actually. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens, again, the same rules apply, is there anyone who would like to speak this second time? Just raise your hand. Ma'am? Got three? Anyone else?
Thank you, Alicia Farias, one-sixteen Smithview. To add to our concerns about the removal of the gazebo, to see the closing of McDonald's, we're also watching very carefully what happens to Candlewick Commons, we're very concerned about the citizens that are, that have been living there and have called that home for a long time, and also for the citizens who use the pedestrian footbridge that crosses sixteen next to St. Francis to sales. It may be something that we think is, well, those people could just use the new bridge that's open to cross Route thirteen, but we have to keep in mind that the people that use that footbridge are the least healthy people in our community, they do not have access to public transportation, what may seem like just a few blocks to us that are healthy and have access to cars, that is a long way, these are the same people that use bicycles because they don't have cars, these are the same people that have to walk who don't have warm coats, who don't have umbrellas, so I think it's easy for us to say it's not a problem, we can just close that, but it's a very important way for people to get around this community, so we're watching both of those things, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Don Pettit, Mounds Street. You're probably all getting tired of seeing me, you could blame my parents who raised me to always speak out when I saw something was wrong, so it's their fault.
Are they coming yet?
No. But my mom's cheering me in the background. There's, I wrote a letter to the editor, to the advocate, if you didn't have the opportunity to see that letter, I'm going to read that to you now. Who paid to move the gazebo? It's a simple request, who paid to have the courthouse gazebo disassembled? This request is anything but simple for our elected officeholders. The Newark Mayor's Office has said the removal was paid for with private donations, but have no records of who donated, how much was donated, or how much money was distributed. A city source said the money was actually funneled through the County Commissioner's Office, but after a request for information was filed, the Commissioner's spokesperson said no money came through that office. So what is the answer? The residents of Newark, and let's include those who live in the county since it involves the county courthouse, have a right to know where the funding came from, or should we be content to let elected officials do as they like without having to account for the actions they take or the money they receive on behalf of a community? The mayor announced his decision to remove the gazebo just days before the work began because he knew there was support to keep it in place. Some members of council said they opposed the removal, but there was nothing they could do. To this day, there hasn't even been a symbolic resolution of opposition proposed on council floor or consideration of an amendment tonight. And also to this day, there has been no accountability as to where the money came from that led to the dismantling of an iconic downtown structure. Is that what we really want? I think I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aaron Daggers, five-three-six Keller Lane, I think you said it really well just now. I think there's definitely a transparency issue here, the mayor owes the people of Newark and the people of Licking County in answers to where those private donations come from. He wants to claim that he was transparent, but won't tell us where those private donations had come from. That's a major issue, it's a huge issue with the way in which things are being operated, and the people deserve to know that. I really wanted to talk a little bit tonight and say thank you to Carol Floyd for years of service, not just here on city council, but over fifty years out there fighting for the people within the Democratic Party and beyond, and, you know, I owe a debt of gratitude to you for everything you've done over the years, Carol, and hopefully we see you still active and participating, and that's really what I want to talk about more than anything today, but that transparency issue, Mayor, is, it's obvious, and if anyone on this, on this dais today thinks that that's going away anytime soon, you're kidding yourself. I mean, week after week after week, people coming out, there's some new faces tonight that I hadn't seen in the past when I'd been here, right? So if you think it's going away, you are really kidding yourself, Mayor, and I really hope that you eventually let us know where that money came from sooner than later, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any city officials this evening?
Two things, the Newark Police Department?
This would be the safety director.
Yes, I'm sorry, Safety Director Steve Baum, for those of you who haven't met, the Newark Police Department, Heath Police Department, Hebron Police Department, and Petosca Police Department went together and did a cram the cruiser event, they collected just over five thousand pounds of food and just under two thousand dollars in cash, so kudos to them. As we speak, the Heath Police Department is leading with participation from officers and deputies from other agencies, a shop at the top night in Heath, again, all the officers that are participating, thank you very much. Lastly, I'll let you know here pretty soon, I gave five potential new firefighters their conditional offers, so as long as they jump through the three hoops they still have left to jump through, we'll have a swearing in here probably still this year, so thank you very much.
Sir? Honorable Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President, in twelve years as law director, I've had the great fortune of sitting next to two, only two, Seventh Ward Council members, Reverend Rao and the Honorable Carol Floyd, and I've been very lucky in that regard. I thanked Reverend Rao for his sense of humor, which not normally what you would expect, I don't think, from a Lutheran pastor, but he has a fantastic sense of humor. I thank you, Ms. Floyd, for your calming influence on me over the past twelve years, which has come in handy on a number of occasions. I appreciate your depth of experience and your judgment, and I will miss your presence on Monday nights very much, but I seriously doubt it's the last for you, Carol Floyd. Mr. President, I will go.
Thank you, Mr. Sassy, Mayor Hall.
I also'd like to thank Carol Floyd for ten years on council here, and you will be deeply missed. Thank you so much, Carol Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, so forty-nine thousand people sitting in Newark, twenty-two-point-three percent poverty rate, one-third of our kids are in poverty, get it, we have a lot of issues in our community, takes a community for us to be uplifted, we don't want anybody to be left behind, we want to see economic prosperity for everybody, regardless of poor neighborhoods, more affluent neighborhoods, everybody should be privy to city services, opportunity, and advancement, and so a lot of this seems to be frustration that is much more macro than micro, where, hey, we see different things in our community, we see change, we see some progress, we see some regress, and so we appreciate your comments, we appreciate your concern, and absolutely we have a lot of work to do. And when it comes to the future of the downtown square and the buildings and the facility, I think that there's a better way than a line item that is neither funded nor are we aware of how much it's going to cost, nor do we have the plans in place in order to actually execute it. So I think through the public-private partnership has been great for us, and when it comes to school education support and the opportunities we have with carpentry classes and with civic organizations like the Rotary, and we have a lot of opportunities to build a gazebo and have it funded and have a plan in place, if that's what the desire of our citizens are. So I encourage you to continue to think outside the box, but, but let's see what's really practical for our community, we have a general fund budget that's balanced by the skin of our teeth, and to put a line item in there for fifty thousand dollars that would take away from potential firefighters, other capital improvements, street repairs, I mean, we're not funding the ready-day fund, and so it's a, it's a real issue for me that if we just do a blind line item veto without a plan in place, and so I'd like to see more planning, I'd like to see more opportunity. When it comes to me being a Seventh Ward citizen, Carol, thank you for the work that you've done on this council, representing my ward extremely well, and your compassion and your understanding of our city, and those years of experience really add up from the school system all the way to city council, and I don't even want to guess the number of years of civic service, but thank you, thank you so much for what you've done, and welcoming me to this council and showing me the true way to work together between party lines and to get things accomplished for this city. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. Carol, I want to thank you for everything. Four years went really fast for me, and your patience is just wonderful, you're knowledgeable, you're going to be missed, but I don't doubt that you're going to stay very busy for a long time, so I just want to thank you. And I want to thank everyone here in the audience for being here tonight and hearing your comments, I don't know what the answers are, we all have a tough job, and we're all really concerned about our residents and what you want, we can't always have our way, sometimes we agree, sometimes we agree and disagree, but I wish you well and have a nice holiday, and with that, I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, Mr. Lang?
Carol, it's been a pleasure serving with you for the past few months, I wish we could have served together a little longer, Emily came on in July, but I did enjoy going to the Legend Elementary and speaking and all the different civics lessons I've received from you over the last few months, it really has been, been a pleasure, and I think as everybody on here would agree, it's, your, your knowledge and expertise is sorely going to be missed, so thank you. Number of comments tonight, you know, about the gazebo once again, and, you know, a lot of misinformation as well, there were some pretty impassioned speeches about a proposed amendment that was never brought forward, and quite frankly, was never circulated to this entire body to, to request support for. There were numbers cited from a petition, and I know, Mr. Green, we had, we had spoken, I appreciate your comments, and, and that you felt it was a bit of a cop-out for me to say, well, you know, are those people actually from the state of Ohio, let alone the city of Newark? I think that's important, I represent the people of Newark, I represent the Fifth Ward, I represent you as a Fifth Ward citizen, it doesn't matter to me what a person from Florida thinks about the gazebo, maybe they lived here at one time, but they don't anymore, and they're not, they're not part of the, the body that I represent, so I think it is important that if we're going to circulate a petition, we're going to talk about numbers, that those numbers be verified, and that we look at people who are living in the city of Newark as, as part of that body. I would have had a tough time, I think Jeremy mentioned that, you know, this, this would have come out of capital improvements, given the number of people that I talked to, their number-one concern was getting roads paved and our, and our capital improvements budget, it was not the gazebo. I've polled a number of people, I've texted a number of people and called people to get a sense, because I understand there's a lot of passion from the people who are upset about it being removed, but there's also a lot of people that, quite frankly, when I ask them, hey, what do you think about the gazebo, they say, what gazebo, I don't go downtown that often, it's not that important to me. So while I appreciate that there's, there's a lot of passion in this room, I think it's, it's important to recognize it, that there, there's a lot more people out there than are represented. There's a lot of negativity, I feel like, going around, when I read some of the Facebook posts, there was a comment I actually read from somebody on this body, I'm not going to call by name, said, I would say most people, referring to this body, fellow council members, do not do it for the right reasons. I give the benefit of the doubt to everybody on this board, and I think that everybody up here is really doing their best, all of the elected officials that we have are really doing their best to serve the community and are all in it for the right reasons. So, you know, with this holiday season coming around, you know, I give, I, both sides of the aisle, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, Mr. Blake, I know you were looking at a proposed amendment, I would have, you know, entertained, entertained the idea and would have been happy to debate it with you, but I understand, you know, if you don't think the numbers are there, not proposing it, so, you know, I think as we go into the holiday season, I'd like to read a little quote, somebody sent me in a holiday card, I think it started, it was a quote from Orrin Arnold, and it's, and it's been edited over the years, I'd like to add, this is a list of Christmas gift suggestions. To your enemy forgiveness, to your opponent tolerance, to an elderly friend or relative patience, to a good friend time, to someone who helps gratitude, to someone who needs it encouragement, to every child a good example, to yourself respect, to your community service, and to all charity. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang, Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll take care of a couple things, our next Finance Committee meeting will be January the eighth, we will not be having a Finance Committee meeting next week, and at this time, and I will introduce the final piece of legislation for two thousand and seventeen, I'd like to vote Rule eleven and bring Resolution seventeen dash one-on-three for a reading.
On?
Resolution seventeen dash one-on-three by Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
First of reading, Mr. Marmee?
Mr. President, I'd like to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolution seventeen dash one-on-three.
Second.
We're in the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee?
Yes, this is something that happened in the probation department that we did not get on to the agenda in time, we talked about it in committee to make sure that there was full disclosure, but we need to invoke Rule eleven, this has to be done in this year, especially when we're dealing with grant money, so it needs to be expedited.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee, on, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub? Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution seventeen dash one-on-three.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee, second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on seventeen dash one-on-three? Seeing none, on, please call the roll to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Mangus? Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub? Mr. Cost?
Yes.
And Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Seventeen dash one-on-three passes eight zero, and unless something extraordinary happens, that is, it will be our last piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Marmee, go ahead.
Thank you. Just to continue on a little bit, a lot of, I'll echo what John's then indicated, that a lot of passion in the room this evening, a lot of things being said that, I, I don't know if it's necessarily, you know, are we truly being respectful when we tell, say that individuals that are trying to improve our downtown are doing it just for their own self-worth, when Mr. McLean has gave numerous dollars to try to better the community, and, and I don't see him trying to recoup any of those funds at all, and he's a perfect example of somebody who just wants to leave a mark on this community. We've had numerous people through, over the years that have done that, Mr. Alfred has done that, you know, all kinds of generous individuals who have done it not for any kind of a return, so to label anybody who provides funds to the downtown as doing it only for their own self-benefit, I just, I don't see that as something that, that should be stated in such a fashion. I keep hearing some things about the closing of McDonald's, the government has nothing to do with opening and closing the McDonald's, nothing whatsoever. Yeah, I would love for that McDonald's to stay there because it's very convenient for me, because I like the sausage burrito breakfast, and I love getting it when I'm coming down here downtown, and now I'm going to have to go out of my way, and, and I appreciated it being down here, and I wish that it were down here again, who knows, McDonald's may open another one somewhere down here, and I would fully support that, too, I'm not going to have any say in it, but it's a matter of, you know, I would love to have it down here also. Symbolic resolutions, resolutions of support are not done by this body, it's a waste of taxpayer money because we have to actually do filings and all kinds of things, we did away with any kind of resolutions of support unless it was something that was required for an application to obtain something or something along those, those measures. So resolutions of support are not done because they're really just costing the taxpayers money, and there's no substance to them, and that was actually probably fourteen years ago when we stopped doing resolutions of support. I really do, I, you know, again, I knew nothing about an amendment, and I'm the Finance Chair, it was never brought to my attention, never received one email about an amendment, never knew what it was about, I do know that funds can't be taken out of capital improvements during this initial phase, it's just, there's no line item in order for that to happen. To say that we could just earmark it, there's no way to do that in the manner in which the budget is passed. So, again, it would have been probably some, I don't know how it would have been amended, but there would have been no line item in order to put it in there, so I don't know how it would have happened, and so even if an amendment was proposed for this evening, I would like to know how it would have been, because, you know, I've been here sixteen years, and I, I study that budget backwards and forwards, there's no way for it to happen, I don't know how it would have. Also hearing a lot of comments about the footbridge and making assumptions that that's going to happen. All that was proposed this, now, I will admit that the folks at St. Francis', that's their solution, and that's what their desire is, because they see a safety concern for their children, and they don't have any other solution in mind, and they know that that probably would help, and it would completely do away, eradicate their concern as far as the safety of their children, and also the parishioners that worship throughout the night and go there as individuals. Now, we have talked about it as far as this body is just trying to do what we can do to help out, and that's what our commitment is. Because here's the thing, we were made aware of a concern of citizens and people who have a church inside of our, and a school inside of our community. There's a safety concern. If there's a failure to act upon that safety concern, that's one of the main things that causes liability. So therefore, there could be a liability exposure if one child were injured and we failed to act as a city. We are acting right now. We're in discussions. We have made no decisions. The administration has not, you know, all we're doing is listening, and we're trying to come up with solutions. Any of you here that said that, you know, that's what's going to happen, you know what's going to happen, bring something else, a viable solution to protect those children down there. Help us out. We've asked for that. That's exactly what happened at the only meeting in which we discussed it was, come to us with ideas, solutions, and things that we can do to make sure that those children are protected. Just like any other child in any other school, we wish them to be protected. And that's what the desire is. The desired outcome is not to make something automatic, it's to make sure that those children are safe. I saved the best for last. Carol, I've served with you the longest on this body. And I can tell you that I will miss you tremendously. We serve on a number of committees together. I appreciate the fact that I can talk to you. You and I can talk about anything, and even if we disagree, we don't hold it against each other, and we know that, at the end of the day, we're still going to care for each other. And I really like that, and I respect you tremendously, and I've learned a lot from you, just your calmness, your ability to talk about things logically, your passion. I tell you what, I'm hooked on teaching those kids with you now, too. I had a blast, and I would love to do that again with you. You're going to be missed by this body, but I know you're not going to be missed by the city of Newark, because you're still going to help. I know you will. And I thought I overheard the mayor asking you to do something already. So, all I'm going to say is, until we meet again, I'm not going to say goodbye, because you and I are not done yet. And I greatly appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marmy. Mr. Raff.
Thank you. That's nice to follow up with.
You've got to get up, Doug.
You could just say ditto. Actually, it's no secret how I feel about you, Carol. I've said it up here before, and I've said it to you privately, and I'll say it publicly, you will absolutely be missed. I've appreciated your influence and your experience, your knowledge, your wisdom, the lessons that you've taught us, and the lessons that you've taught others. You've been a valuable asset, and you will absolutely be missed. So, the utmost respect for you. Thank you. I appreciate that. With that, I will be, I guess, the first to wish everybody in the room and everybody in the town of Newark a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to wish Carol the best. She's been here as a mentor, obviously a teacher, but also just the point of standing up. I mean, we who sit up here, I mean, there's 49, roughly 49,000 people in our city, and so few of us will get this unique opportunity to actually serve the citizens. And, you know, many times we have unopposed races and things of that nature, but, you know, the people that actually get to sit up here and to make decisions or become leaders in this manner, I mean, you can be a leader in our community in many ways, but to be an elected leader, I think, is something very special and unique, and you've done it with distinction, with honor, and so thank you for that. Fellow Lincoln Lion forever, so, you know. I just need to make some clarifying remarks. You know, many times, I've been on council for four years now, and if it was various different pieces of legislation that I've worked on, from the GLBT to the ban of the box, to getting our trash holders to have a recycling option, I've worked in a manner where I tried to develop a coalition, even before it gets to this body, to this vote, and I just really basically didn't have time to develop this coalition. I believe I had sent an email to our law director late last, or maybe Tuesday or Monday of last week, a week ago, and then I did meet with our city auditor, and he did confirm that the language that I was going to propose, which would have added a Section 2 to ordinance 1761, that it would have been a workable solution as far as earmarking dollars. So, I did have that, and I got that message from Steve's left now, but I did work with those people before I was going to propose it. But before you do anything, you've got to have an idea. And so, that was, you know, working with our legal council, working with our chief financial officer. I was going to get the idea, but then after talking to members of my caucus, it just wasn't going to fly. And so, it was like, well, why propose something that would have been more divisive versus anything else? And so, that's why I didn't offer it tonight. But I do think that it does symbolize something. I mean, it does symbolize, you know, where do we want our city to go? You know, I appreciate the mayor's comments in the State of the City address. I do believe there are a lot of good things happening in our community, but I am fearful that, you know, we need to improve and better handle our communications with the open public, you know, not just certain segments of our population, but with everyone, to make sure that everyone feels like they're on board. And so, you know, we have that Vision 2028 plan is coming out, and I think there's just so much momentum, positive momentum going forward. I just want to make sure that we have things going forward for each segment of our community, so no one feels like they're being marginalized. I do want to give a plug, because I know that Tanya Cooper and several others are here. I really enjoyed the Advocate article recently that talked about not only the unemployment rate in our community, but that doesn't, but also recognizing that the poverty rate really reflects the quality of life in our community. And Kay Hartman, who works at the Sally Sharmer, she had a really good quote in there talking about, okay, yes, people are working. This isn't her exact quote, but just to generalize, you know, people are working, but what really is their quality of life? Are they receiving the wages that they need, the benefits that they need? And the passion that many of you spoke tonight reflects what was going on in that article, and we have to address many of those concerns. So, I'm, you know, thank you for coming tonight and bringing that up even more, but I think I agree with many of you. It's time for action to start taking place instead of just words. So, I just, you know, I'll just end with that, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Mr. Cost.
Well, I don't think it's a secret that, I didn't want to see the gazebo moved in the first place either. But I also have to admit that I could not justify spending the city tax dollars to move it back, put it back. Unless I'm misunderstanding, and please correct me, you have before, feel free, the county has agreed to rebuild the gazebo, and they've agreed to rebuild it on the land of the children's home, where the children's home used to be. If the county can rebuild it there, they could rebuild it somewhere else as well. They could rebuild it on the grounds of the courthouse. As builders say, it's location, location, location. I don't see a reason for us to expend city tax dollars if the county is already willing to pay to replace it. It's a little bit different perspective, but I think it's something that should be discussed. I want to thank Jeremy for discussing the issue. I want to thank people for coming in and discussing it. I don't view this as an us versus them kind of thing. I just don't. It's not how I look at life. I want to see what we can do that's in the best interest of the city of Newark. And while we're on that subject, Carol, I want to thank you for everything you've done for this city.
Thank you.
And what you've meant to this city council, and the things you've done here, and most importantly, that were just incredible friend you've been, and I hope that continues on for many, many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Cost. I'm going to split my time a minute this evening. Carol, I'll tell you, for 10 years, you have done so many positive things for this city, for your city. It's been great. I've never known you to have an agenda, except for what's best for the city of Newark when you've been up here voting. I'd certainly like to thank you for all your hard work. Who knew back in the 8th grade at Lincoln Junior High School, and I was in the 8th grade, you were teaching civics, that I would have the honor to be here and serve our council with you. So, thank you very much. With that, Mrs. Floyd.
I want to say a couple things before I go into the speech I've been preparing for about three months now. First of all, I would like to thank Mike Mangus. He's not here tonight, but this is his last council meeting. His daughter, who is a dancer and has been studying for a long time, had an important recital tonight. So, he couldn't be here, but he's worked very hard for the community as well, and I would like to thank him. As far as many of the comments you made tonight, and I'll get into some of those pretty soon, but I agree with a lot of what you said. You all know I was opposed to the gazebo being moved in the first place. I agree with Mr. Cost that that may be a better solution to it than anything else. My concern is that I heard all kinds of other things added to the gazebo tonight in terms of McDonald's moving, and the homeless, and the walk bridge, and like they're all lumped together, and they're not, I mean, I volunteer at United Way two days a week, and I'm on a couple committees at United Way, so I know that Deb Dingus is worried about the homeless all the time. We talk about it. Every time I have a chance to talk to her, we're talking about those things, and she's talked about the warming shelter several times, talked about our church doing it at one point in the ballgame. So, it's something, I mean, I think we're aware of some of those issues. I agree with what Mr. Marmy said on the walk bridge. Don't just assume that's going to happen. That's my ward. St. Francis' is my ward. The bridge is my ward. Pearl Street's my ward. I'd be totally opposed to closing that walk bridge. I know the city's putting some lighting there. I know there's already been some fencing put up. I mean, I'm a retired schoolteacher, so taking care of the kids at the school is very important. But you don't close a public walk bridge, and it is a distance. I mean, there was, you know, talk about, well, they can walk over to Mount Vernon Road now that the bridge is open, but that's still a long way, and that's something that, you know, I don't want to see happen. I just don't want it to be, I'm basically a pretty optimistic person, a pretty positive person. Lots of good things have happened in Newark, and I don't want everything else to become a downer. Let me go into my, what I prepared, sort of kind of. I basically enjoyed my time on city council. I had to really be coaxed to go here. I was replacing Bill Rao, who was retiring, and a couple, Mark Guthrie and somebody else came to my door at least three times, saying, "Come on, Carol, we want you to do this." And it's like, "No, I don't want to be on city council. No," you know? And finally, Mark Guthrie told me, "It's only two meetings a month." Yeah, he did. It's like, "Uh, no, it's not." I've been here through three administrations. When I came in April of 2007, Bruce Bean was here. I was here for the Debold administration, and I've been here for six years for the Hall administration. I've seen a whole lot of different council members up here, like Doug said, he and I were, have been here the longest. And I just, I think as long as we're working for the city, as long as we're caring about the city, I don't see many issues that are Republican and Democrat. I think if I discussed the national tax bill with people up here, we would disagree on lots of things. But in terms of what happens in Newark, we've had some disagreements, but we've had very few in the 10 and almost three-quarter years I've been here. We've had very few votes that were straight party line votes. We've had some votes that were 6-5 that were basically not set party line, you know, there would be some crossover. Sometimes on things like zoning. Zoning issues are really tough, because, you know, it gets into people's personal property, and that gets to be a very difficult thing. But I think we do our best work when we work together to try to solve problems. My line has always been, you can agree to disagree without being disagreeable, you know? Because I think you do best when you sit down and talk to one another and try to work out some problems. When I was trying to decide a couple years ago if I wanted to run for reelection, it's like, number one, my knees don't like the going and knocking door to door, climbing those stairs, and, you know, the dogs jumping out at you and all that kind of stuff. And I knew that most of downtown would be done in terms of the construction and everything. I knew that the bridge would be done, and I just decided that would be a good time to sort of go out, you know, to go out when things were going well. That doesn't mean we don't have problems. We do. I agree with Jeremy. I liked the article that was in the paper the other day. It's something I was already thinking about. Like I said, I volunteer at United Way, and United Way has just done a study and found that in Newark, and this is in Newark, 21% of the population is below the poverty line. Another 34% of the population is what is called the working poor. These are people who, they have a job, probably not making a lot of money, and probably not any benefits. They may or may not have a car, but it's probably not a car that always works well, so that they're always close to the edge. Where I live, just three blocks from here, is I'm surrounded by rental property, so I understand those issues. I taught at Lincoln for 30 years, and subbed there for another 13, and I grew up in that area, so I know what the community is like, what the issues are as far as that is concerned. I've been on the Newark Vision 2028 group. I was on the group that studied transportation. I think that's a major issue for Newark. I think that's something that has to be worked on, and I don't think, I know we had a proposal here on council five, six years ago of set bus lines. Somebody came with a plan, and that's wonderful if you have the money to do it, but we don't have the money to do it, partly because we've been cut by the state a whole lot, you know? We have lost a lot of money over the years from the state. But I was on a transportation committee, probably the most effective meeting we had. Brian Moorhead was in charge of it, but we also had Bill McDonald from OSU. We had Rod Montagnes from the hospital, and we had Jim Metesik from Metesik Distributing. Businesspeople who, they came up with some really creative ideas, but I didn't see them at other meetings, and nothing specifically happened. I know some people in this room have signed up for the transportation committee going forward, but I think we have to include private businesses, because in this day and age, when there is not a lot of government money available, we have to basically count on working with private businesses to sort of get some of these things accomplished. And those men had some real creative ideas at the meeting that we had, and I think there are things that can be done going forward, but you have to work together to try to do it. I know that housing is a concern. I've heard the term gentrification several times. It's something cities all over the country are facing as old buildings are torn down or are rehabbed, and then more expensive apartments and things are put in, and I know that's an issue. I know that's an issue, like in my neighborhood, for people who are there. But again, I think it's something that, going forward as a community, we have to work on those kinds of things. I look forward to continuing to work for the city of Newark. I've talked about being on a committee to study the charter and to see what we can do, you know, if we want to change that in any way, and the mayor has talked to me about a couple other committees I can be on. Plus that, I'll probably do a little bit more volunteer work. But I think we do understand that Newark has problems, and that with a population that, when you have 55% of the population that doesn't have a whole lot of money to live on, and sometimes one bad tire or one medical emergency can put you on the edge, it's something that, as we're making decisions up here, we have to consider. We have to think about that. Well, I'm leaving, but I'll be around. I have a feeling I'll be on lots of committees and show up at things, and if there are things I can do for council, I'll be glad to do that. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. And again, thanks. Just a couple reminders. City Hall will be closed December 25th and 26th, also Monday, January 1st. Our next council meeting will be January 2nd, which is a Tuesday here in this room. 6:30 will be the squaring in of our ward members. 7 o'clock will be the council meeting. Next committee meeting will be January 8th at 5:30, also here in this room. I'd just like to add my thanks for your attention this evening. I'd like to add Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year to all of you, and we'll see you next year. So, a motion that, Jerry? A motion by Mr. Cost, and by Mr. Raff, all the favoritists, if I'm saying aye, at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah.